Um, we're just waiting. I mean, there's no Kyle yet. No Brad, no Ron. I know Brad's on his way. He left the office a little bit later. Um, but we could uh, get started if you want and just wait on Brad or you know, it's up to you.
Um, well, the first the first two already held over eighty-five.
Yeah, but we have to, because of the way this platform works, we have to go through them one at a time because um.
No, I'm just trying to determine like what, you know, if we can at least, well, at least we can get started with what we have. Eighty Rogers is just the resolution in the letter, so we don't, there's no more conversation on that one, right? Anthony, we're done with that?
Correct.
All right, so, and as far as I could tell eighty-five, one oh five, it's like the same site plan we've already talked about how many times?
We're just waiting on Larry Jones also.
Oh, I thought I saw Larry before.
Yeah, he must have dropped off here.
Megan, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, are we able to be heard by everybody that logs in? Is that still applying?
Yes, Rocco.
Okay.
All right, well, we might as well get started. Whatever we can't do, we'll come back to um. So is the, is the audience in the room, so to speak, or?
Yeah, so the audience, because you haven't been here since we started this. Once you call the meeting to order, the audience, well, they can hear us now, but once you call the meeting to order, I'll make a little um. You know, a little preamble about how it work and we'll go from there.
Okay, well, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the February ten twenty twenty-two meeting of the planning board of the Village of West Hampton Beach. Want to, uh, at first express my appreciation to Mr. Newbauer for chairing the board in my absence over the last two meetings. I could not be present due to circumstances beyond my control. I did watch some of it on YouTube. It was like a mini-series. Um, so I hope that we can shorten things up tonight a little bit. Uh, I believe our board secretary has some instructions for everybody, so.
Uh, yeah, so for everybody that's here listening, um, we can see your name, what I'm going to ask you to do. When we call the application, um, you're going to just listen. We let the applicant, their agent, their attorney, their architect, or whoever make their presentation. When they're done, we then allow the board members to speak with them. When they're done, they'll go back and forth. The chairman will then make an announcement, ask if there's any public presentation. If you do wish to speak on an application, I ask that you raise your hand by using the hand raise feature. We'll let you in. Then you can unmute yourself and make your presentation or your opposition, whatever you see fit. When you're done, we'll put you back in as an attendee. And um, go from there. Everybody will get an opportunity to speak as many times as they wish and um, you know, that's it. So we can get started. The first application is a holdover, uh, Cassano and Camiso, and it's already held over till February twenty-fourth. The second application is Nicolaides thirty-six Hazelwood Avenue. That too is held over till February twenty-fourth. The next application after that is eighty-five and one oh five Montauk Highway, also known as the Corner Restaurant. Um, that's held over till February tenth. I don't see Nick Vero here, so also, if you're, if you're here on an application, just, you know, as a presenter, just raise your hand. I don't see Nick Vero, but he did submit a, a plan. I don't know if we should just move on and.
Let's just pass, yeah, move on if he does, yeah, if he doesn't.
Plan was delivered late, so why don't we just hold him over to the twenty-fourth?
Uh.
Realizes he delivered the, the drawings late to our ten-day rule.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I, at a minimum, though, I'd like to get an explanation from him if we don't get into the details of the project or, you know, at least, you know, where are we going with this? It has been quite some time since we've heard from him, so if he does appear, I'd at least like to have that conversation to say, well, what are we, what are we doing here? Or are we just giving me another plan to chew on for a year and then we'll do something else? Um, so if, if Nick does appear.
Yeah, we'll circle back to him at the end.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so the next one is application number four, which is Rogers Associates LLC. And we have Frank Eisler here for that. Um, what we'll do is we'll allow Mr. Eisler to come into the room. He can let me know if there's anybody else with him and we will go from there. I do, at the end of the Rogers Associates application, before you adopt the resolution, I just have an announcement for the audience. Um, so I don't want everybody to just, uh, you know, exit after the resolution is adopted. So if we could just come back to me when, after you're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, good, good evening, uh, board members and, uh, Megan and the public. Uh, I'm not aware if I have anyone else, um, that's in the, um, waiting room.
I see Jerry, I'm guessing maybe Jerry.
Oh, Jerry's here, okay.
Yeah, and Brian Grogan, is he with you or is he on the patio gardens one?
Uh, he may be here to listen, uh, to a resolution, uh, so if you can let them in, I guess. But do you see any barringers?
Um, Brian's raising his hand, so I'll let him in. I don't see any barringers, but if they're there, um, they can just raise their hand.
Okay.
I do see Jerry, so maybe Jerry and the barringers are together.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay. Um, so they're both in the room. If you guys want to get started, let me just let Brad in really quick. All right, Brad's here, so we can get uh, started on this one.
Uh, if it's up to me to start, I, it's my understanding that the board has a resolution before them tonight that they're going to act on.
That's true. And we also have a, a report and recommendation that we'll be sending to the trustees as well, in addition to the decision of the board.
Okay. That, so that, I mean, we really have nothing to add at this point, uh, for the applicant. We'd like to hear, you know, the resolution, I guess, if you're going to read it out or.
Well, I mean.
Or receive the, see the way you want to do it.
It's, it's not a short resolution, but I, I think that the last paragraph kind of gives the flavor of what the action of the board is going to be tonight. We are, um, the resolution generally says that we are preliminarily approving the site plan for the purposes of acknowledging general compliance with basic site plan elements under the assumption of a fifty-two unit scenario. But everybody should know, and this is in large part based upon the extensive and, uh, uh, public comment, I'm sure, that this preliminary approval is not to be construed as an endorsement of the applicant's application as proposed. Um, we are just basically finding that you satisfy the basic site plan elements under your proposal. Um, and as part of the, um, as, as the report that we're going to send back along with that to the trustees, um, we are urging the board, the, the trustees, when they're reviewing it in their capacity, uh, that we, um, that they, uh, carefully consider, uh, the density that is proposed, whether it's appropriate for the neighborhood. And, uh, at this point, we are expressing our opinion that we are not in a position to recommend the specific, uh, density or density reduction. Um, but, uh, are urging the board of trustees to, um, weigh those impacts very carefully, uh, before it makes any determination. I, uh, Anthony, did I, did I summarize that generally correctly? Is that the, essentially what we're doing tonight?
I think you did a good job, Dave.
Okay, and, uh, I think I speak for my fellow board members that that is the general sense of the board is, you know, we're not, we're, we're, we're not approving, disapproving, or expressing any particular opinion about the project as currently proposed tonight. All we're doing is saying you satisfy the site plan elements preliminarily. Uh, but we are requesting that the trustees look at this very carefully in terms of density and what the, uh, potential impacts are around the, uh, surrounding neighborhood, in particular, the village as a general, a general rule. So, um, Anthony, we're not doing public comment, we're just doing the, uh, the resolution and the report tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept the, um, resolution.
Uh, Mr. Eisler, you gonna waive reading?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion, we waive the reading of the resolution and accept it as written and make it available to the public along with our report and determination.
I'd like to do that a separate votes, Ralph. Can we do, uh, a vote on the decision itself and then a vote on the report and recommendation separately? I think it would be.
Make a mode for the decision.
A second.
Back up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same motion on the report and recommendation.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I, I join in, Mr. Newbauer, I was, I like, I'd like the, the board secretary as soon as reasonably possible to have these posted so that the public could read them and see them um, as soon as possible.
Um, yeah, uh, yeah, I'll talk to Brad tomorrow and we can see, maybe we can put it on the website. Um, the one thing I wanted to let the members of the public know, there looks like to be quite a few of you. Um, the Board of Trustees will be having a public hearing on this application on March third. Their meetings begin at five o'clock PM and you should contact the village clerk's office to find out whether they'll be held in person or by Zoom and for the link of that. As a courtesy also to all of the people that live on Rogers and Hazelwood and in the surrounding areas, the Board of Trustees have noticed this public hearing in the Southampton Press on February seventeenth. It will be published and February twenty-fourth as well. So there will be two weeks of public notice and then the public hearing will be heard March third at five o'clock PM and it's a Thursday. Um, what I'm going to do, since Chris Clapp kind of seemed to be the focal person for this, I'm going to send him an email tomorrow, which he can then disseminate to everybody else. We'll put it on the website and if, you know, we could put the decision on there also and everybody can go from there. And then I guess maybe we have to decide how long to hold this over for with us.
Well, is this before still as a formal site plan application or we?
It's not, it's not. They would have to re, I think at the point of uh, returning, whether it's returning at the same density or at a different density, uh, we'll have to start the process again.
Will they have to?
Not start it over again, but re, you know, we'll have to probably re-advertise at that point.
Will it be considered a new application or is it just, uh?
I don't know.
I got a bunch of questions. Do we keep it on the agenda?
I don't, I don't, I don't think so, because you, we've, we've closed the hearing for now.
That's why.
So there's no real continued hearing at this point.
Okay, so it can come off the agenda?
Yeah, I don't want the members of the public to be confused when they see it on our agenda and they think we're doing something on it.
Why don't, why don't you leave it on the agenda, but say indefinitely, um, held over until, until, uh, special permit process is done, something like that.
Okay.
Just as a place, just as a placeholder.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
And then, um, Mr. Eisler, you can contact the village clerk if, if she hasn't been in contact with you or, you know, if, or us, it, you know, it doesn't really matter and we'll get all the information to you about the March third hearing, but I think at that point it'll probably be in person.
Okay, uh, would you happen to know that if it is in person, is there still a Zoom possibility to participate by remotely?
There won't be a remote possibility, but, um, somebody could watch it live. That's our only option, but I can find out tomorrow. You know, it's still kind of up in the air and nobody really knows what's going on at this point and then, um, one of us can get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much and, uh, thank the board, thanking the board on behalf of my, uh, client for your, um, moving this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eisler.
Oh. Have a good night.
Okay, so let me, um, Brian left, Nick Vero is back, so.
Yeah, let's get, let's find out what's happening with Nick.
Okay, let me just move um, attendee and I'll let Nick Vero back in. So we are going to go back to application number three, which is eighty-five and one oh five Montauk Highway, the Corner Restaurant. And I don't know what's uh, where did Nick go? All right, so next here and you just have to, um,
There I am.
There you are.
Ever so handsome as usual.
Very much, and you as well.
Uh, Nick, good, we're good. How you been?
I'm good, thank you.
Very good. We, we got your, uh, latest, uh, plan a little late in the game, so we're not really prepared to have that conversation about the site plan tonight. But we would like an idea of what's been going on and where are we going?
All right, so, as we discussed the last time, I spoke to my client, uh, several weeks ago, um, she wanted me to, you know, activate the permit and try to move this thing forward. So based on the last, the last comments that we got back from Ron Hill and Brad was kind enough to send me a letter and I think it was back in July. Um, and that was right after Manny Maris had passed away. Um, we addressed a good majority of those comments. Um, we have, I don't know, Jay, we, we should be getting that, um, lighting plan back. We sent out to our consultant for our, you know, for our lighting plan, so that'll be the next submission. Um, I did submit these drawings to you, I believe it was last Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I don't know when they were stamped in. However, I think what we need to do is I'm reluctant, but I would be willing to put an application into health department. But I think the most important thing is to see if we can get at this point, so we're not wasting any more time with, you know, going back and forth, maybe perhaps a referral to zoning board. Um, because I think a lot of the stuff we would be doing here, moving this forward, would be moot if we don't get some kind of an approval for, for zoning board. You know, based on the location of the building, we need several variances, uh, based on, you know, some of the things that we're asking for.
I tend to agree with you. I think it's sort of almost like where we were with the seven eleven application of Rose. I think we have to get into general conceptual agreement about how big of the building we're going to allow, how, you know, that kind of stuff.
So then I can make my adjustments based on, based on comments from, you know, from ZBA, we can make our adjustments. Um, you know, then we can, you know, finalize the site plan and, and try to move this ball forward.
Do we have a complete site plan? I don't see elevations. All I have is a parking lot.
Well, I gave, the site plan I gave you, my latest is that I gave you a landscape plan. We started developing a landscape plan. I'm waiting for my lighting plan, which I should have back relatively soon. We do have elevations, um. We had submitted elevations a while ago. We revised them, but then Kyle was, you know, reluctant to say, hey, you know, go back to the original ones we have, so I'll resubmit those. Um, so that you can take one last look at those and that was with the peak roof that we had. Um, and then, you know, at that point, maybe at the next hearing, we can get a, you know, perhaps a resolution or the hearing after that to move this back to zoning board so that we can get their opinions on, you know, locations and, you know, some of the setback, uh, relief that we're going to need.
I think we need a complete application before we think about moving anywhere.
Okay.
I mean, we, at a minimum, I mean, it's, I think there's a lot of stuff that's going on that's intermingled. I mean, the, the size of the building that's posed is dramatically larger than that which exists.
Right.
Um, that's going to be an issue. Certainly how it looks, uh, will sort of dictate where it should go. Uh, so I think this, I think as Mr. Newbauer, uh, quite, uh, well, well observed is that there's, there's a lot of moving parts here before we can send you anywhere. And, um, since, you know, I, I understand that your client wants to get back in the game, but this has been sitting for a while, so it's, you know, it's, uh, you know, and not, and I think everybody's looking forward to getting that corner, that stretch of road between those two roads cleaned up, but, uh, you know, it's, it's going to have to be a more deliberative process, I think.
Okay, so I will resubmit elevations that I had resubmitted to the board prior. I will, uh, submit our, as soon as I have the lighting plan, I will submit that to the board, um, for review. Like I said, I've made the, you know, most of the comments have been addressed that came from the, uh, letter that was dated, dated July twenty-first, off the top of my head, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, take it from there. If you review it, we'll go from there. Whatever else you need from me at that point, we'll get it to you.
All right, well, it's Thursday. You got, if you can get everything to us, say by Monday or Tuesday, I would say the latest, uh, that would give everybody, I think, a reasonable opportunity. And, uh, perhaps give, uh, Brad, Kyle and, uh, and Ron time to, to, to weigh in on what, so that, you know, when we do reconvene in two weeks, at least we're, we're, you know, we're, we're doing something, you know?
Correct, okay, fair enough.
All right, so, uh, we'll hold you over to February.
Over the application to two twenty-four.
Perfect, thank you.
A second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, Mr. Vera. Look forward to seeing you. Maybe, maybe live and in person next time. You never know.
I hope so. Keep our fingers first, right?
Yep, all right, take it.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, so the next application is application number five, which is West Hampton Inn forty-three Main Street. Um, Jim Hume is here, but he did submit a holdover request till February twenty-fourth, so.
Motion. Second. The application at applicant's request until two twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so the next application is Prime Storage ninety-eight Depot Road. Um, they should be here, so if you're here from Prime Storage, can you please raise your hand? All right, they should be here. They did get their approval from the Board of Health. Um, I did ask them to come back and give you guys an update, so it looks like that's what they're here to do. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Well, yes, great. Tell us, tell us what we've been missing.
Uh, well, I'm a year older. Um.
It's the hell out of the alternative.
Uh, I, I, I think, uh, you know, I'm not sure, but, uh, is Anthony Kay on? Uh, he, he may be from, um, Prime Storage. If he's a panelist, he may, I mean, an attendee, you may want to let him into the room. I know he was talking about listening.
It looks like A K O U, is that?
That's right.
Okay, so yeah, I invited him as a panelist. He just has to accept it.
Thanks so much. Um, and, and, and Elisa is with me from my, from our office here, in the, in the office here. Uh, so, so, um, really, uh, what's been happening, um, is that there were, uh, the Suffolk County Board of Health required, uh, covenants be written and a water easement be settled. Um, and, um, those items took a little bit of time, um, for the client to negotiate with the adjoining properties. Uh, they have since, um, uh, settled all of those items and we have, uh, the covenants written and the, the water easement, uh, in place. Uh, and that was just this week, um, received and sent to, um, the Suffolk County Board of Health by the surveyor. Uh, and we are waiting for formal approval by, by, uh, Board of Health. Um, but otherwise, everything else is, uh, is, is, is in and, and, and all the boxes are checked as, as far as we know. Uh, those were really the last two pieces and I sent Megan the, the, uh, copies of the covenants and the, um, easement information, uh, just as update, not, not as anything else, not expecting anything in return, just, just to, to keep you guys informed. So, uh, so that's where we, that's where we stand, um, upon, um, uh, I think, uh, maybe you guys correct me, but I believe that upon, um, a final letter from Suffolk County Board of Health, um, we're able to close this out and, and move forward. Um, I can, I have a sort of an update, not an update, nothing has changed, but the, the approved plan that you guys all, uh, looked at and, and reviewed some time ago. We had lighting plans and all of those things submitted and, and everyone seemed to sign off. Um, I have that today. If we want to just go through it real quick as a review, uh, whatever the board, um, pleases.
Did the Board of Health do anything, take any action to change any aspect of the plan that we were all in agreement with? Did anything change because of what they did?
No, what they needed were the covenants and water easement language. Those were the two stumbling blocks.
So, uh, I believe that once we get the formal approval from the Board of Health, we'll be in a position to close this matter down and hold it over for a hearing. What might be best for everybody is, since there were no apparent changes, is while you're waiting for that, um, there should be some coordination as to make sure that we're talking about the right sheets. So when, so when, so when the resolution gets written, we're all in agreement on what we're approving.
If you could send us a list of the correct sheet numbers and dates.
Well, most of all, send to Megan and to, uh, and to Anthony and to, and to Brad, so they can go through it and, you know, so when you do get your approval, we're not reinventing the wheel. We have that already in play.
Makes perfect sense. Make that, that, that makes perfect sense. We can do that. Um, Elisa, um, who's with me tonight, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll send that out in the next couple of days, probably early next week. We'll get that in place and, um, make sure that we're crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is.
In that way, it's, and also that, you know, it helps move it along, because if, you know, the village, the village staff has to dive into the pile and figure out what's what, it, you know, it's going to take longer. If you tell them what's what and they just have to verify, then it's a lot quicker.
Okay, happy to do that.
All right, um, anything else from Anthony or Brad? We're all good. Anybody on the board have anything?
Uh, let's just, nobody in the audience first. It doesn't, nobody's raising their hand, so.
Okay.
We just have to. To do that.
We hold over the application until two twenty-four.
A second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully by that meeting, you'll get your final approval and then we can, you know, do what we have to do and maybe you'll get your approval come early March, hopefully.
Okay, well, thank you all very much for your, for your patience and endurance.
Be coming to the next meeting prior to the meeting if you could.
I'm sorry.
If you could, please let us know if you'll have the information needed by the next meeting so that we can hold you over and you don't have to attend if you don't.
Beautiful, okay. And, and the next meetings are in person from, is that what I understand?
We, uh, we're hoping, we don't know, but if you get your approval, put the Department of Health, get it to Megan and she'll, you know, and that, you know, there was really no reason for you to come to the next meeting if all we're going to do is say we're going to have a, a meeting, uh, uh, to, to termination at the following meeting. But if, uh, okay, but if you do make, if you do get that done, let the, let the, uh, let Megan know so we know what we're doing here.
So I think before, before we go on and just because you're here listening and everybody else is listening, I think to be fair to the public, the next meeting, which is February twenty-fourth, will be Zoom and then come March tenth, we'll go back to in-person, because everything was just lifted yesterday. The trustees have not made a decision one way or the other. I just don't want anybody that's listening for any of these other applications to be under any false pretenses that we might not be Zoom or in-person, so, you know, uh, it's not my call to make, but it's yours, Dave, and we can start to put that out there.
Unless we're instructed, unless we're instructed, otherwise.
I think the extension to the open meetings law to allow to go fully remote was originally January, then it was pushed to February fourteenth, so would expect by Monday, I think we kind of expect some sort of allowance to go remote, but, but that we would have some say going forward, but, uh, we probably won't know until next week.
Megan, how far in advance of the meetings do you publish the agenda?
Well, the agenda is published. The, it, the agenda can get published on the website at any time. It gets noticed to the paper by February eighteenth, so if we don't have a direction one way or the other, you know, we kind of got to go with Zoom. My opinion, for whatever it's worth, I think it would be safe to say February twenty-fourth, let's do it by Zoom as of March tenth. We'll, as of February twenty-fourth, we'll have a better direction to where we're going. We'll know what the trustees want to do, because you can't just say planning by Zoom only. Uh, ZBA in person, trustees in person, it has to be a concerted effort, so it's really for them to, to say, but I, I don't think.
Pending the, pending the trustees telling us all what we're doing, we'll just assume it's Zoom unless we're told otherwise.
Right.
It's also pending the governor telling you what to do, because the governor has to extend with Zoom allowance. Well, we can't hold a Zoom meeting without her extending the Zoom allowance, so if she doesn't extend it, it'll be in person.
Yep, exactly.
Oh, I actually have to root for somebody in Albany?
All right, let's move on. I don't want to have a three-hour meeting.
Thank you all very much. We'll be in touch.
Okay, so the next application, which is number seven, fifty-five Old Riverhead Road, fifty-five and fifty-nine Old Riverhead Road. Heather Wright has put in a request to hold that over to March ten, twenty twenty-two.
We hold the application over at applicant's request in March ten.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, uh, the next application is number eight, Firestar Holdings LLC, fourteen Rogers Avenue. That's already held over to March twenty-four. Um, so the next application is number nine, WHBH Real Estate LLC, Seven Beach Lane. Jim Hume submitted a request to hold that over to February twenty-four, twenty twenty-two.
And make a motion, we hold that application over at applicant's request to two twenty-two, twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the next application is number ten, WHB Development Partners. Okay, uh, the next application is number ten, WHB Development Partners LLC, one oh-seven Old Riverhead Road. I see Jim Hume here and Erwin Crass now, so I will let them in and then they can tell me if there's anybody else with them.
I'm here and I'm just trying to get my glasses on so I can see, sorry. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, uh, good evening. So, uh, we had submitted, I just wanted to quickly review with you, some proposed changes to the, uh, overall site plan, and if I can, see, should, share the screen here. Okay, um, hopefully what you can see is, is a new uh, site plan showing a building that is three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet, which has some, uh, savings for us relative to, uh, to the secret process. And we had also submitted, uh, some elevations for the building. Here is, um, the new front of the building. There had been a request for a darker color, which we've attempted to show here, uh, and, um, a request for more glass, uh, which we have, uh, attempted to provide. Um, and so that would be the front and the side view. Uh, that's the rear and the other side. And I think you have hard copies as well as digital copies, and then this would be the proposed canopy, which is also in the darker color.
This is the, um, the, does, is this the design that your client wants to proceed forward with at this time?
Uh, yes.
The only thing that, I guess, bothers me a little bit, and it's, I'm sure it's not intentional, it's just the way it goes, is there are also thirty-six bollards proposed, which are not shown on the elevations. I don't know what they're gonna look like. I don't know how tall they're gonna be. I don't know if they're gonna be bright yellow. So I don't, you know.
You're talking about these items, these items here?
No, the, you have bollards all around the front of the store. So they don't really show, you know, fully what the streetscape is.
Now, this is an, uh, uh, obviously an elevation of the building itself.
I understand.
What, 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 do you have some thoughts about that? Or, or is Erwin?
I don't know what's proposed. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm dreading that it's gonna be these three or four-foot tall, bright yellow, you know, things.
We can make them pink or chartreuse or something if you prefer. I don't, I don't really have an answer for that, but we'll certainly get an answer for you.
Well, that's why I'm raising it, Jim.
Exactly. Are we, see, it's Erwin. Are we required to have bollards? Because I wasn't sure if that's something that's required or that's something that we optionally decide to put in.
Uh, I, I personally would prefer that we don't have them. I'd rather the parking blocks, because I think they're unsightly as a general proposition.
Right, but is it, is it a requirement of the village or the, is there, is there a requirement for us to do it?
I'm gonna, I don't know.
Because I didn't know we were doing it, so that's why I'm asking you this question.
I'm not even sure that you're required to have bollards. It's just, uh, you know, uh, you know, my question is if you're gonna have bollards, what are they gonna look like?
Can we share the plan where the bollards are, uh, actually illustrated?
Yeah, because I didn't see, I never saw that. I mean, I must I missed it.
Do we need them, Kyle?
I don't even know what we're talking about. Where are we talking? Can we put, do we have a plan that shows, shows the ball?
No, because we haven't, we have, to this date, not shown any bollards, and I guess the question is, are we going to? And the question back is, do we have to?
Dave, Dave made a comment that there's thirty-six bollards, so.
According to the, according to the site plan that I got, you'll see little dot, I mean, the top of the building, you'll see it says proposed parking bollards, thirty-six typical, and you'll show little dots at the top of each of those parking spaces by the building.
On this site plan?
On this site plan.
All right.
It's the one I got. I picked up.
I, I, my sense from, my sense from Erwin is that if we don't have to have them, we won't do them.
Uh, but I would recommend, because what happens is, you know, the, the front of the cars start to encroach into the, uh, you know, the sidewalk in front of the building. So you're gonna probably want some, you know, wheel stops or something within those, uh, parking spots, so they don't encroach into there.
I like the flat cement things that they put down that you're not supposed to drive. I think those are cleaner and neater looking, I mean.
I don't know what you, what's a, a cement thing? Are you talking about a wheel stop?
Yeah, well, you know, the wheel stops are about six inches above the ground and the width of a parking spot.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think that would be a cleaner look from my perspective. It must, it was a requirement for a bollard.
There is no village requirement, uh, just as a building inspector, fifteen years, I've, for some reason, people like to drive into the seven-elevens. That's the only, uh, you know, once every year, they have to show up to one of these car inside seven-eleven, uh, inspections, so.
You'll see the, the gla, extra glass is not a good idea then, right? Kidding, kidding.
I, I'm just offering that it might be seven-eleven's idea about the bollards, that's all.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll, um, well, all right, let's go in the other direction. If they're, if they are going to be there, is there, uh, we don't want to make them yellow, I guess. But again, I don't, I don't, I don't really know the standard for that, so.
I, I think, I mean, I don't know. I, I, I think Kyle and I have set our piece on the, uh.
All right, so I, I think we'll.
I don't, I, I'll just, if anybody else on the board wants to weigh in, if they want them, so be it.
I think, I think my client is in agreement with you, so, subject to seven-eleven saying something different, then we'll, we will, uh, go with that plan.
Withdraw the ball.
That would be my preference.
This is, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I, yeah, we've, we've been around the board on this, um, I mean, I'll just throw it out to the board members. Does anybody want to weigh in on the, the new elevations, the colors, you know? Well, what's, what's the thought process here?
If I may just jump in real quick, just, uh, a technical matter as it relates to the plans, uh, specifically the elevations. We really need to have, uh, the heights referenced on there. I don't know how high the, the canopy is. There's no reference on, uh, uh, you know, the height of the building. So that'll be helpful. That's just the technical.
Because, we can, we can definitely provide that.
So, you know, because then that gets into, you know, how, uh, what's the height, uh, pitch of the roof can be and those types of things. So there are some constraints that may be involved that could affect the design, which obviously would be the height, so, uh, that would be helpful.
Okay, but no, nothing there, would be a zoning board. Obviously, we're not gonna build it taller than zoning allows, um, so, um, because we're, we're, we're hopefully gonna start a discussion next week with the zoning board, about this layout with, uh, at this location with these setbacks and dimensions, so. Uh, but we don't want to do that if there's still a major, if there is any objection to this layout in general.
And we moved the garbage to the back of the building, so we don't, don't have to look at the typical seven-eleven fencing and garbage containers. This is a huge piece of property. I don't understand why this has to hang on the side of the building in plain sight.
Okay, well, that may necessitate another variance, but. That, right, that might be another variance. That also would probably require more paving and less green space, so, and, you know, we'd have to then pave around the whole building, so we put it there to, you know, leave as much impervious space and green space as possible, and we've kind of always, you know, had it that way in the, the original plans, and I think it might have been on the other side for the, um, design that you didn't, um, want us to go with, but it's usually always next to the building.
Yeah, and we've seen the photographs from, um, the other building you built, and we see what goes on at the, um, seven-eleven on, um, what is it? I guess Mill Road. And, um, those are an eyesore, chronic eyesore. Here we have an, an enormous piece of property, and I think since we've taken the building and put it the way you wanted it without putting in on an angle the way we originally wanted it, I think the least we can do is make it look attractive when people drive by and not have the, uh, typical seven-eleven mess.
Do you, did you provide, uh, you know, this is more for Ron, but the, uh, the truck radius circulation, uh, on this? And the only reason why I say, you know, it's not simply, uh, you potentially, because you got thirty-six wide travel aisle on the east side of the canopy. You got thirty-five foot travel there, so there's a potential you can move the building further to the east, so maybe you don't need the variance. I don't know off the top of my head. I would consider that an accessory structure, what the accessory structure setback is for the B-three zone. But you have some other, uh, alternatives to, with this potentially, uh, and again, I, I realize you have the, uh, delivery of the food, uh, fuel trucks that may come into play, but, you know, it's not simply, okay, just throw it behind the building where the building is.
Well, but the request is to put it behind the building, so.
That's right. But, but you, you made the point that maybe it needs a variance. We'll have to see what the accessory setbacks are.
Well, we, we can look at that. I, I do believe in an earlier iteration, we had some studies of that, but we'll certainly look at that again. Yeah, um, and if we can slide the building forward, under those circumstances, we'll take a look at that. Well, if we slid the building east, we would lose some of the nice landscaping we were doing in the front, which is what I thought you wanted, so we would use.
No, 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 no. I said, depending on where your radius and your circulation of the trucks, the travel aisles of thirty-seven feet and thirty-five feet, because those are way exceed what's required under the, under the tat, on the village code, those could be reduced. It's not talking about moving the landscaping in the front.
No, no, you want, you want to narrow the travel aisles.
Correct.
Right, well, we'll, we'll look at that and we'll have to report back.
Uh, Jim, the other thing is, we did, I get, I don't know if you saw this, but, uh, Ron Hill had indicated that he had looked, uh, at this, and apparently his only comment was the, uh, the driveway on Old Riverhead Road, um, should be left turns out or not permitted.
Correct.
And he said, if, if necessary, the site layout needs to be adjusted so that a fuel, so that fuel deliveries can be made without permitting left turns out of that driveway.
That's okay. We discussed it with Ron. We figured since we had the other exit, we would use that for the left turn, so it was gonna be, you know, right in from people going south, right out from people heading south.
Yeah, I think he just wants to see that on the, on the plan. Uh, that was his only thing that jumped out at him. I, I guess, I mean, I, I mean, really, I think we have to get some, these are some more technical issues, I guess, I mean, are we in a position, I think Kyle and, and, and Anthony, are we in a position to, you know, send these proposals, all the ARB for preliminary comment? I mean, I'm, I don't know how the board feels about it, our board, but.
They're still going to the ZBA also.
I understand, but, I mean, we've been discussing aesthetics for a very long time. I mean, it seems like we're into some technical aspects as far as the layout. It's really, the, the aesthetics has been, has been a hang-up too. Uh, I guess we need, the applicant needs some, you know, firm direction in that, in that, you know, on that issue. Um, so I don't know if we want to send it over to ARB to get their comments based on, because this is the plan they want to pursue. Um, so.
Dave, I think the way you're asking the question, it kind of answers itself. You probably should at this point, if you're getting to a point where you've provided a lot of comments and, and it's a question of whether this is the plan going forward, you might as well send it today.
Well, look what, oh, but I would say it's the question of you, you, is the board happy with the design before sending it over? Are you happy with the design and the canopy and the roof? I mean, particularly given, uh, what your nature review was, uh, for the canopy and the level of detail you requested or approved, uh, on the corner.
Look, Kyle, in this, in, in the site plan process, realistically, the ARB's role is really more advisory than anything else. We retain ultimate site plan authority. I'm, I think.
Hundred percent agree, but you can only, you know, you always try to prevent getting, you know, conflicting approvals. If this case, if the ARB comes back and says, oh, yeah, this looks great, now it kind of puts a little pressure on the planning board to make a findings as relates to that.
Well, I'm just, that's part of the reason, like I said, I'd like to get their comment, you know, um, but I'd like to get, you know, anybody on the board tonight has anything they want to offer on the subject.
Keep in mind that, that in the context of this layout, what we have proposed here is, is we've tried to be responsive to what the board has indicated to us they would like to see, so.
No, I appreciate that. That's why I'm asking, based upon what we've received tonight. I'm, I'm curious what, uh, if any of my fellow board members wanna, wanna weigh in on the subject at this point.
The only thing I have to make comment on, I did, we would certainly like to see this aesthetically pleasing, the elevation on the front page shows these lovely trees that are on the sides of the building, having the garbage and the, uh, little huts that are customary for seven-elevens would create an eyesore, in my opinion, so. I would urge the applicant to do everything they can to continue their good effort to make this an appealing building.
Do so. We'll, we'll take a look at that very carefully.
Larry, you have anything you want to say tonight?
I think, um, I don't have any real issues now with the, with the facade or the canopy that, that changing the color, darkening it a little on the the larger facade areas, I think is, is helpful, and, uh, increased glazing looks nice. It's, it seems a little like the gable, had them on the, I mean, gable on the front of the roof is, it, it, it's a, it's a little offset by the way the, the columns below and the way the glass is placed, but I like the additional glass a lot and, uh, and landscaping, I think, is, uh, the better that can be, that'd be great, so it's, uh, I think it looks nice.
Michael?
Yeah, I like it. I mean, I think the color's gotta be tweaked and the sunburst doesn't look that great. It looks a little cheesy on top, above the seven-eleven. But, uh, you know, what I'm seeing, I, I like, uh, you know, I'm with, with Ralph with the landscaping. It's a seven-eleven. It's a gas station. Landscaping's gonna be key on this, this, this spot, I think. But, uh, I, I just think the color should be tweaked a little bit. That's, that's where I'm at in the sunburst. I don't know, it kind of, I don't like the way it looks.
Rocco?
I like the glass. I like the stone. I, I think, are we talking about earth colors on the siding? Because I, like I had stated in the past, you know, I'm, uh, colorblind, so I can't weigh in on the colors.
It's more of a light gray, white, but a dark light gray, if that makes any sense.
Okay.
I mean, to be perfectly honest, up and down that stretch of road, we've had an explosion of tans and browns and, um, and now the, the Valero, I think we approved was gonna be generally white. Is that right?
I mean, in general, the, the appearance, I, I, it looks good. I like it.
Well, I, I don't, it doesn't knock me over. I think it's lacking in some imagination, but, you know, like Michael said, at the end of the day, it's a seven-eleven and a gas station, so I don't know that we can expect, uh, that much. Uh, it is troubling that it's the first thing that you're gonna hit when you get over the railroad tracks into the village, and I was hoping it would be something a little bit more, uh, but, uh, perhaps, uh, like Ralph and Michael suggested, you know, that the, uh, and Larry perhaps is, uh, if we could beef up the landscaping and, 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 you know, take the edges off, it might, might work better. Let's put it that way, but, uh, I, 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 I would like to hear what the ARB has to say, uh, as I said, in its advisory role, at least primarily in this.
We're happy to go there.
So unless anybody on the board feels otherwise, uh.
You know, one, one little thing, Dave. The seven-eleven signs that are on the canopy need to go for now, unless we, those are gonna require variances, and we made the Valero take them off, because we do. Take them off because we didn't want any confusion that we were considering. Multiple extra seven eleven signs or Valero signs as the case was there. So in future plans, Jim, have the. Signs taken off the canopy.
And have the, and have the elevation measurements like, like Kyle said, so that we have a. So at least we'll have a single set of plans that all the boards are working off of simultaneously.
There's also somebody in the audience who would like to speak when you guys are ready.
Well, I mean, do we have, uh, well, you know, we'll hold off on the ref, the referral to ARB until we've heard from everybody who wants to be heard.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so based upon. The possible change of. Moving the garbage to the back and we can lay it out. Does that mean we, I thought we were. Hopefully to move things along, going to be at the zoning board next Thursday. Does that mean now? We need to put that off because we don't know where the.
Or when I think we need to look, we need, Erwin, we need to look at this and understand the entire picture and then, then we will know the answer to that. So you, you and I should talk about that offline.
Okay, I just was trying to understand.
I understand, I understand what you're trying to do. I'm suggesting that you and I talk about that offline.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Jim.
That's Jim's way of, that's Jay, that's Jim's way of saying shh.
Now everybody knows.
It would be, it would be indelicate for him to get a muzzle.
You could just smack me if we were in the same room.
Well, that's true.
So, all right, uh, Megan, you said somebody from the public or somebody wants to comment?
Uh, yep. So there's a Luis, a Luis Conway. So I'm going to promote her as a panelist. Jim, if you want to finish sharing your screen. That would be a little bit helpful and then.
Yes. Hi, it's Louise Conway. I live in the village of West Hampton Beach full time. I'm, my question is, what's the illumination across this entire property? Is it all dark sky? Law compliant as well as at the pumps and all the surrounding areas?
I, I think we have, the village has a code, a code on that and we have to comply with that.
And at the pumps as well?
The village has a code on that and we have to comply with that. Yes.
Okay. I don't see it in the drawings. I don't see any.
Well, this is, this is just a, a site plan that we shared with the board to, um. Uh, get feedback on the general layout of the property.
Okay.
The, the rest of the application needs to be updated. Uh, based on this, um. Proposal, uh, would, and it will include landscaping and lighting and all of that.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Brad, what, what, Brad, what other require? I mean, we know it's dark sky compliant. What, you know, what are the requirements? Just in case it comes up. You're muted.
Sorry. There are maximum illumination by values. There are limits to light trespass off of property. Um, typically the parking lots and. I'm not sure. I don't have the chart in front of me. We might have a, a higher value for a gas station, but, um. The, uh, yeah, the dark sky is really about not allowing uplighting is the, the easiest way to, to speak about it.
And the spill of the lights are to be kept on within the property by lines as.
Right. It's, it's a little interesting actually on this site because we, we do, but the, um. L I R R property, the train tracks there and, um, yeah. Having a little light trespass to the north there. Be desirable, but, um, it, it's something we have to make sure complies with the code. Or else there, there could be further variances along those lines.
Well, given that the canopy obviously is going to be higher, or I presume is going to be higher than, you know, than normal. Uh, so that the lighting will be higher than normal, you know, there'll obviously be some.
We'd expect to be fully recessed within the canopy so that there, they couldn't possibly uplight, but they. They could be bright, uh, but they have to demonstrate with a. Uh, the lighting plan, um, that the values don't exceed our, our code as well. So. As, as the applicant was saying, like this is not a fully engineered plan because they still need variances. And once they, that is all set with respect to the, the placement, um. We will need further, you know, the details, the drainage details, lighting details, all the landscaping, uh, details will have to be submitted and reviewed by the board.
Well, clearly we'd want to avoid, because that area up there gets, you know, in the evening is sort of a darkish area up there. We want to avoid this looking like a UFO. In the middle of a cornfield too, so.
A Christmas tree with the green and the red signs.
And, you know, sometimes when you drive past those canopies, you know, especially if you're coming out of the dark, it could be very jarring. The light that comes from the underside of those canopies. So I think I want to take care to make sure that that we don't have that effect.
Well, part, part, part of that's handled through, uh, you know, the maximum Calvin lighting. So you don't have that fluorescent bright light. I mean, the code requires that the maximum Calvin's on this is three thousand. Galvins. There's also a uniformity ratio in terms of the max to min, uh, of the lighting. So you don't have these spikes in lighting as well as required under the lighting.
Right. And as I said, it is our intention to, uh, provide a plan that complies with the village code. Uh, and that's one of the things we will not be seeking a variance for.
And I did just check our lighting, uh, our lighting code does have specific for service station and canopy lighting. So that we do have a code specific to this.
All right, Dave.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I just like some clarification on where the dumpster is going to be moved to. That's like, I wasn't clear on that about where, if we're going to move it.
I, I think, I think Jim said that him, that he and his client were going to have to have a discussion. Offline, offline about that. Cause I feel, I'm feeling if you move that one piece of the jigsaw puzzles, then other pieces get affected.
Well, that's, um, I've been thinking about that for a while and, and I don't think. And I know, um, maybe Ralph doesn't agree, but I, I think it's not in a bad place. And I think the layout is generally, it is, is a good layout. And I think as far as visibility is concerned, I think it's in a spot that's the most hidden. You know, you're coming in from the north side. You can't see it. If you're coming in from the south side, if you want to block it. I would suggest that there's some plantings along that curb line on the south side of the container. Because once you turn the corner, nobody's looking to the, to the left. You know, you're looking straight ahead and I, I think that it will become not invisible, but not noticeable. In its current.
But why not just move it to the side of the building and call it a deck?
Which side?
That's the, that's the applicant's option.
No, I'm just saying, my comment is, I think it's in a good place.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, if I'm, Jim, if I can make a suggestion to you, perhaps, maybe you just have, um. Maybe you just, you, you, you keep what you have and then maybe come back with a alternative number one, if you will. Uh, compare and contrast. And, uh, maybe that'll help things along because I, I mean, I appreciate what Rocco's saying. I also understand what Ralph's saying. I've seen. There's a, uh, seven eleven on Waverly Avenue. When you pull into the dry, uh, and Patrick, when you pull into it. Uh, that cyclone fence has been through the war and back again. And I mean, so, and that's just what happens with these things. It's just.
The side opportunity looks like. Eventually, every.
I don't know if the, I don't know if the future care and maintenance of that spot could be handled with some kind of a covenant. That, uh, would give the village better authority to regulate its appearance. I mean, that's that. It's sounding more like an enforcement issue than it is. Well, it sounds like an enforcement issue more than anything else.
I, I can maybe.
I, I have a question for Erwin. Um, where is delivery is going to be coming in from, from that same area where the container is on?
Well, that's, that, yes, Rocco, that's one of the issues. The, that's a delivery zone and, and the pickup zone for the garbage. But usually the surrounding thing of the garbage is not a chain link fence. It's more of a, um. Block type sturdy structure. I mean, it might have PVC around it also, but it's, it's more of a sturdy structure that. I think the car would be more damaged than that. It's not going to be a fence. Plus, like you said. In all that side area setback is going to be landscaping around it. But it is a common area where the trucks would be able to. Back in for, for deliveries and also the truck would be able to pull in to load the garbage. So that makes it a little bit more difficult trying to put it around the building. And then, like I said, there's going to be. So much more asphalt that has to go into this property and less green space, so.
That, that's why.
Doable, but I think, I think there's, I think there's a cost there and I, and I don't think it'll be. You know, again, doing this nice with, you know, we used, um. If you look at Riverhead, I mean, I use very expensive gates, not fence gates, but like, you know, they might have cost like ten thousand dollars for these heavy. Heavy gates. So it's not, it's not a chain link fence and it looks, you know, it looks a lot nicer.
Well, then I think you're going to also, you're going to also have to show that on the elevations then.
Well, you know, for, for the reasons that you stated, I think, like, like I said before, you know, there's no, there's no best. But I think the way to lay out is now is it works in a lot of ways, and I think it can be hidden. You know, and it's already hidden coming in from the north side. You can't see it and coming in from the south side. If there's plantings along the curb, it will disappear.
I think that level of detail that, uh, Erwin mentioned is, is necessary to make that assessment. You talk about the details that for the enclosure, the details of the, uh, the, the walls that are going around it. So, you know, in order to adequately assess that, you need that level of detail.
Right. I agree.
Well, I, I think initially what we were trying to accomplish here was to make the elevations and the style of the building and the layout how you like it. And we weren't focused on which those issues at the time until we knew we had a direction that we could move forward. Once we have that, yes, I agree. You should have the heights and all those things, but right now we were just working on. Getting a concept that the board would be acceptable, that we could move forward. And that's why we haven't done any of those. Um, fine details yet because we're trying to get, you know, the, the approvals put in place. So then we can do the full set of, you know, plans and make sure that what's in the full set of plans, including the plantings. Are things that the board will be comfortable with, but there was no point in doing a full landscape plan if we didn't have the site plan of the building approved.
No, I appreciate that.
Process that we're working with you on.
Yeah, and I want to avoid chasing our tails unnecessarily. I, and you know, sometimes it's just, sometimes it's just procedural and it's, you know, just the way it goes, but. Um, you know, with that being in mind, now if you're gonna, you know. You know. Propose a site plan as an alternative where this is going behind, then I don't see how I can send you to an ARB. And frankly, just more thought about it with the elevations we have, if it does end up the enclosure being on the side, that's going to have to be included on anything that goes to ARB. They're going to have to see that.
Why don't we do this then? What, I, I, uh, we, we've heard what you said about this. And you've heard Erwin's thoughts on this. Let's, let's, uh, submit between now and the twenty-fourth. Uh, some, a more detailed elevation of that feature. Uh, so that, um, um. And I mean, we'll, we'll certainly look at the other things that we talked about, but.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this. I mean, I, I'm sure it's not your first preference to move that thing around the back of the building. I'm getting.
Probably not even our second preference.
I'm getting that. I'm getting the big picture there. So.
Right.
Um. Why, I would, I would definitely give it some thought. But at a minimum, I tend to agree with you. I think you're going to have to get, you know, if this is your preferred plan, which I get, I think you're going to have to get us something. By the next meeting that looks like it.
Okay, we can, I think we can, we've, we've, we've tried to hit those deadlines so far. They've been pretty good, I think. So we'll, we'll keep it up.
So with that, I think you have to show the enclosure. You're going to have to show the heights as asked for by Kyle.
And an option for the closure in the back as well, Dave?
Well, I mean, let's put it this way, I'd, I'd like to see that or I'd like to, or I'd like to at least have some explanation from the applicant as to why that. Is not something they want to do it.
We'll do one or, we'll do one of the other of those. Yes.
Because I, I don't, I was, you know, I, I'm curious because I, I don't, we don't have Ron tonight. So from an engineering perspective, I'm curious to see what. He would have to say about that as well.
Right. And, and, and as you point out, our engineer may have some thoughts on that as well.
So.
And the aisle widths may not be changeable because of engineering, you know, flow consideration. So we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll definitely take a look at all of those and we will come back either with an alternate B or why an alternate B doesn't work.
And I would say, let's not. I'm sorry. I would ask the board members during the next couple of weeks, take a look at seven elevens and see if you concur with me. That this is a result that makes this a diminished sign.
What, what I was going to say is, um, we shouldn't be talking about adding extra variances, by the way. I, I. I think what Kyle said is, is legitimate that we should be looking at the aisles, but we can't. We can't send this to the zoning board and say, throw an extra variance on this just because we want to see the dumpster in the back. So let's, let's avoid that question if we can. It could be, it'd be hard to justify on a site this big to say there's no other place to put the dumpster that doesn't require variance. Think it'd be almost an impossible, be a possible argument to make.
That's a pretty big burden. Yes, I agree.
Why can't you just put it on the north side of the building and tuck it in the corner? Put the fence around it there. That way it doesn't face out. No variance involved.
Not, not to belabor this, but there's no accessory structures. It's, it, the dumpster can go anywhere. The planning board deems it appropriate. Unless there's a specific sort of buffer or transitional buffer or something along those lines, but that's not really the case. So I mean, if you all want the dumpster in the back, it's not, it shouldn't really affect. The, the zoning procedure, but the placement of the building does since they're not going to meet the fifty foot setback. So. If that means moving the building around and there's also the transitional. Buffer in the front yard, that thirty feet swath of landscaping, that has to remain because that's another consideration in the code. But if you all decide the dumpster is better in the back or in the corner or what have you, that's, that's fully within your purview. And I don't, I don't think that really gets into the, it wouldn't affect the zoning board unless you decided to put it within that thirty yard transitional buffer. Or some other buffer to residents, which we don't have here.
So from your perspective, Brad, if the dumpster was moved around the back, it doesn't trigger extra zoning issues. On, except under the circumstances that you referenced, transitional yards or something like that.
I don't, I haven't seen anything in the, in our village code that, that says it has to be a, a specific spot. It's really up to the planning board deeming it appropriate. Uh, unless there's a conflict with another code.
Yet another power I didn't realize we had.
Darn. Well, I will, we'll take a look and we'll come back with either this is how it would work or. These are the reasons that we really think this is not what we should be doing. So.
I think that would be, that would sort of, I think it would frame the issues and, you know, sort of present us with a go down column A, a go down column B at this point. I want to narrow.
Without, with, whatever we do with the dumpster, based on what, um, Brad has indicated. Um, won't affect the variance relief, so.
Apparently not.
Uh, so then we can, we can start dealing with them next week on this building location.
Okay.
Make a motion. We hold the application over to the twenty-fourth.
A second.
Second.
Go on favor. Thank you, Mr. Hume. Thank you, Erwin. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you for your feedback, gentlemen. Have a lovely evening. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Um, all right. Let me just. All right. So the next application is number eleven, which is the Hampton Synagogue Parish House, thirteen fifteen Brook Road. One sixty-one Sunset Avenue. I see Frank Lombardo here, so I'll move him in. And then, um, maybe Frank can let us know if Bo is with, you know, if Bo is with us.
Um, if I could before, I have one more tonight.
Well, and Jim's here still.
I'm, I'm going to adjourn it, so I might, um, save. If, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience for, uh, patio gardens tonight or not, but.
You want to adjourn number sixteen?
Yes.
Well, there's a, there's, there's like fifteen, sixteen people here. So I don't know. Tony, what do you? I, you know.
I don't have any of my people with me tonight, so, um, there was a miscommunication between all of my folks, so. I just indicated, uh, we decided at four thirty today, which I apologize for the lateness that we were going to just seek to put this over to the twenty-fourth.
Well, it's a public hearing, so if people want the opportunity to be heard, I think we have to commit to them.
All right, well, I'll wait then.
Okay. You're here. We will call that one to the calendar and Jim, I'm just going to put you back into the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Frank.
All right. I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, Bo Bishop is, uh, in, uh, in the audience.
I don't see him unless he's under a different name. And Bo, if you are, can you just raise your hand? But I don't see him and somehow Ralph Newmar got kicked out. Back in.
Rocco, what have you been doing?
All right. If he's not out, I can, uh, basically fill you in.
Well, you, uh, we did get our classification from the. Well, you, uh, we did get our classification from the A R B. And they seemed, again, the letter is not as clear as I would have written it, but it seems to be that you've. Uh, you've pleased them. So. That's the best I can, that's, that's what I interpret from this.
Okay. Well, I, just to, uh, give you a progress report from our last meeting. Uh, we did receive comments from the Department of Health and we're working through them. Uh, so, uh, that's a plus, that's progress. Uh, the A R B you mentioned, uh, and, uh, the only thing that's, uh, the only other item is the secret determination. And, uh, I defer to you, uh. We have anything on that?
Anthony. Anything? Kyle?
Yeah, it's really a Kyle question. The zoning board did its own secret determination.
So what was that?
A negative declaration.
Negative, so we did uncoordinated review?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, you know, we can, we can have it for the next meeting. I don't, I don't, I would imagine that it would be the same.
Nothing's jumping up and down.
No.
And it seems to me, Kyle and Brad, you guys seem to be pretty happy with what's going on. I think Ron weighed in. They took care of everything, so. I, I think, but for the technical aspects of it, we gotta, gotta, um. Got a plan that we can go forward with at this point. Unless I'm missing something.
No, I think you can make a secret determination at the next meeting.
Okay, so, anybody else on the board have anything they want to chime in with?
No.
Make a motion, we hold the application over to 224 Intensive Patient of the SECR.
All in favor? Thanks, Frank.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, so the next application is number 12, Country Point at West Hampton Beach, 44 and 60 Depot. Um, the applicant. Um. Did ask to hold it over, but it looks like Paulina is here, so Paulina, if, from Beechwood, if you want to speak, just raise your hand, otherwise. I don't know if you're just listening in or what. Yep, she wants to be let in, so. I don't know how this person keeps, Mike Sudano is in as a panelist. I don't know how to get him out. All right.
Hey, Megan, I just wanted to let you know I was just here to listen. Um, I don't really need to.
Okay. Any comments? So you guys, they, they requested to hold this over. Um, they're still waiting on Board of Health, so we just need a motion to hold over Country Point at West Hampton Beach to February 24th.
Make the motion.
All in favor? Alright.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the next application is number 13, PG JG Holding Corp., 214 and 238 Montauk Highway. Uh, also Baby Moon, their architect, Michael Sudano is here. It looks like he's in the room. Or, uh, trying to get in, so we will let him talk and go from there. Okay. I don't know what. He's in the room, I just don't know.
He's muted again.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I have, um, Walter Dunn was trying to call in also. I don't know if he's.
Okay, are we gonna be discussing your February 8 letter? Is that the primary topic of what you want to discuss tonight? Cause we got, we only got that three hours ago, so we're not having that conversation tonight. The board members have not had a chance to even look at this. I got this letter at 2 o'clock.
Right.
So, it's, we're in no position to have any conversation. We do have a 10 day rule. It can be.
Well, can we talk about that entrance way?
No, we can't. You're not, you gave us new information. Three hours ago.
All right, but what about the two parcels? Cause this is a, two separate lots. So that's something we should talk about.
In what respect?
We really can't close off that entry because it's two parcels. If I close it off, we have no access to that parcel. They're two separate lots.
Is there a shared parking agreement or cross access agreements, given that you point out that these are two separate lots?
Uh, well, they're the same owner. It's just not.
No, I understand. I understand.
So it's one owner. They have no desire to join the property because of possibly. Eventually, maybe down the road, if someone, if they want to sell it off, you have two separate lots.
And you'd have an issue with your. Parking facility associated with the restaurant.
Cause, well, that too, you're right, 100%. But if they wanted to knock down that restaurant for some reason, redo.
But then they, they, then their option is they could open the, uh, the, the curb cut back up. And I don't know how they provide the parking on there, but, you know.
But that was the only issue was, I think, uh. DPW would have to have say on if we could even close it up. And if we do close it up. We might have to widen the next entrance down, the west entrance down to wide and to make it accessible. Uh, as per DPW's requirements. So there's a lot of stuff that, what ifs.
I went through a DPW review when it was installed, so it should be more than adequate. Um, you could also provide, uh, a, a cross access easement and common access off of the, uh, parking lot. Onto the, this parcel. Done all the time.
Right. So, I don't know where Walter is, but he might have a hard time getting on.
Walter Dunn?
Yes. He wanted to speak on behalf. He's the one that wrote up that letter.
And yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd also want Ron here, you know, as a village engineer, and he certainly has had a chance to look at this and evaluate it, so. And we do have, you know, I mean, it's one thing to submit something a couple of days before, but to get it two or three hours before and expect. A public hearing that means anything is not realistic.
It came to me late, so I just wanted to get in your possession.
I appreciate it.
But I guess Walter's not able to get in, Megan?
I don't see him. I see a phone number, but I don't know whose it is, so I don't.
Yeah, Walter's trying, is it a 516? He's trying to call in.
Four, five, five?
I'm sorry, let me see.
Five, one, six, four, five, five?
Yes, that's him.
All right, so I'll let him in. I don't. Um, I mean, I guess I have to rename it first. It's not giving me the feature to let him in. So I don't know if it's because it's a phone number or not. Um, I'll just hit allow to talk.
Isn't Dunn Engineering the village's attorney? Or a, a, a engineer?
Correct. It's conflict of interest.
Uh, so Walter's in, he should be able to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, I was asked by, um, Michael Sudano, the architect. Uh, to take a look at, uh, what was a, uh, looked like it was gonna be a decision to permanently close the East Lee Access driveway. And, uh, I really wanted to bring up some considerations for the board to help you as you're making that decision. And, uh, that's where we wrote, uh, the tables that, uh, I understand you haven't had a chance to look at, and I can appreciate that. Uh, and, uh, just had the three alternatives. That we considered, and we looked at the advantages and disadvantages of it, and we thought that would be helpful to bring my thinking. Uh, to you, so you could, uh, you know, see what the options were to make the decision that, uh, we have. And the preferred one was alternative one from the, uh, in terms of the, the applicant. And we came up with 17 advantages and no disadvantages for that one. And for alternative two.
Isn't this a conflict of interest?
Pardon me?
This is a conflict of interest.
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe so, but again, uh. I had submitted this letter to Mr. Sudano for him to present. Uh, work with the board. Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, the. Yep, well, well, it, it could be that way, and, uh.
Why don't we pa, why don't we pause the conversation?
Yeah, Tony.
And, 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 you know, when Ron can join us. We'll, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of whether this is a conflict of interest or not. It, it's, it's highly unusual, Mr. Dunn, to have you appear. When our village engineer is with your firm, so. I don't think we should, no, I don't think we should continue with this right now, especially that all this stuff was submitted late. It really. This is not a good time to be having this conversation. We should cut it off.
I'll be available anytime you'd like to talk, and, uh, I'd be happy to discuss any issue that you have too. And I think I have some explanations for it too, so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
All right, I figured this probably hold it over to the 24th.
Make a motion, we hold the application over till the 24th and examine what just happened.
Well, I'll be damned, it took 16 years, but it happened finally.
Uh, Tony covering up, I knew we're in trouble.
All right, did we have, did we vote, or did I just?
We voted, alright.
All in favor, I.
All right, so next application is Justin's Chop Shop, and he's here. Um. Let me let Justin in. And his architect. And we have a decision on that, which I emailed to you all late this afternoon, but it's there. And I don't know if they have Jody with them. One of them can let me know, but it looks like no. Justin, I'm trying to promote your architect, but he's not.
I'm gonna text him right now.
Okay.
I just texted him.
Okay, I guess let's get started.
Alright.
Go ahead, guys.
Well. Justin, we have a resolution for you.
Hopefully it's a good thing.
Well, do you want to wave, you can, if you want to wave the reading of it?
I, I don't know. I have no clue what that means.
Let's put it this way, it's an approval. So, if you wave the reading, it gets approved that much faster.
Oh, let's wave the reading.
Make a motion, we accept the determination as written.
Second.
All in favor? I. Go to Village.
Congratulations.
I really appreciate it.
Get the village hall, get a copy of your approval and then get working.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thanks, Dave. Bye, thank you.
Hi, Jody's here, but if you want to tell her she missed it, I don't know. Jody's here, but you can tell her if she has a decision. Okay, see you later. Um, all right, so the next one is number 15, Village Marine, 33 Library Avenue. They need to be held over to February 24th.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Okay, um. And the final application, which is West Hampton Equity LLC, 1222 and 80 Montauk Highway. Um, obviously Jim Hume is here, but he, well, let's let him in, and then we'll see if anybody from the public wants to be heard.
Uh, good evening for the applicant, James N. Hume, 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. Um, and as I indicated before, um, sorry for the late notice, but we're requesting that this just be put over for all purposes. Until the March, uh, February 24th, uh, meeting.
Well, as Anthony indicated before, it is known as for a public hearing, we do have a number of people waiting to, uh. At least hear what's going on, so I would open up, uh, I would like to, if anybody wants to comment. Uh, on the application at this point, even though, uh, the applicant's not making a presentation tonight. Uh, you know, the forum is open, or you could just wait until the next meeting. When I'm sure Mr. Hume will be ready to proceed forward, uh, with. With whatever witnesses and support he needs.
We should also ask Dave that if anybody who commented last time. There shouldn't be just a repeat of prior comments, because nothing new has been presented by the applicants. There's no need to repeat a comment from the last meeting.
I would, I would think that goes without saying, but, you know, it's good to remind everybody.
All right, so we have us, one person with their hand up right now, uh, Luis Conway, um, and then. If after she's done speaking, anybody else wants to speak, they can raise their hand.
Can Miss Conway, please?
Yes, hi, I'm gonna try not to repeat, but. I am wondering with SECR, which I've heard about many times here. When does a cumulative impact review under SECR occur, and who does it? Who's the, who would be the lead agency? Would it be the planning board? The zoning board, where we're talking about as many developments as you have on this schedule that are all being held over for different dates. And on the prior schedule I attended, all around the Depot Riverhead Road area. Who is the lead agency, or how does one ensure that the cumulative impacts on the environment, water, watershed? Air, uh, community be considered in an area as small as this with over 200. Uh, condominium units we're talking about, not to mention one that's not on yours, the one behind Strebbles. It's going to add. I don't know, another hundred? So I'm wondering how, which, are you the ones who consider the cumulative impact of all this on Montauk Highway and Riverhead Road? Or who?
Ja, generally, generally speaking, one of the agencies will initiate the secret process and will send out notices to all the involved agencies. Essentially saying, does anybody want it? Um, or, or do you have any objection? Uh, so, so that, uh. Historically, I would say that, that our, our board would generally initiate the process with, cause, cause that falls sort of within what we do. I'm not saying it's definitely gonna happen, but that's probably what's gonna happen, and we will send out notices to the various involved agencies. They will have an opportunity. Comment or not. Uh, and then there's a, then there's a secret process, like, if I, if I recall correctly, Kyle, there is a public comment. Uh, on, uh, when we do secret, if people want to, you know, raise certain issues that need to be addressed.
Well, it depends. Uh, there's a public comment period if the, if a project, uh, is issued of a, uh, positive declaration. But in terms of the cumulative impacts, uh, you know, just for example, this board just went through it for Rogers Avenue, and. That did take into consideration the, uh, you know, the projects. We actually made them stop the process. Submit as a supplemental in order to, uh, address these, the cumulative impacts associated with this application. Because it, you know, it revived itself in the middle of that secret analysis, so. This board in its due diligence said, wait a minute, we need to halfway through, we said, wait a minute, we need supplemental in, information. Given that this project came back online. So, you know. In general, whoever establishes lead agency is the one who determines first determination of significance. And then the cumulative impacts are, if, if it does get a positive deck or is taken under consideration during a draft environmental impact statement.
Well, all these, um, applications come on at different stages and at different times, and are put on over at different dates. So I guess my request to the board is that with, I don't know, there are six or seven applications on.
So I guess my request to the board is that with, I don't know, there are six or seven applications on the last meeting date, and about five of which are here, and they're all being held over on different dates, that you consider the cumulative impacts under SECRE review of all of them in such a small area and include the one in Strebbles that's now coming up for a new, that, that area between Strebbles and Depot Road is getting highly impacted and a really good hard look needs to be taken of the cumulative impacts on the community, the schools, the air, the watershed, the runoff, the sewers, the every water quality, everything. And that's my request. You'll do with it as you will, but thank you. I can't emphasize enough the concern I have and many others do.
This is relates to the project in Quio behind Strebbles. That I do know has been issued a positive declaration. They are preparing an environmental impact statement, and the cumulative impacts associated with the, you know, the further development within the area are definitely being considered.
And they're all being looked at together?
Correct. That's, that's, that's the definition of cumulative, assessing the cumulative impacts of the projects.
But I mean, not segment them. Don't just look at the one at Strebbles alone and on its own.
That's what I, no, it's not segmentation. That's why it's called, there's a whole section in the, in the draft environmental impact statement that says cumulative impacts.
Okay.
Now, each applicant, you're gonna say, we, we can't force the applicants to have their their individual applications heard simultaneously. That's, I, I think that's what, I think that's what I heard, is that you want them all to be heard on the same evening, so it's all, that's not
No.
feasible. But, but each one of these applications, when there's a pause deck like we did with Rogers Avenue, there will be a discussion of the scope of what needs to be studied, then that will almost by definition include the cumulative impacts. And we did that on Rogers Avenue, where we actually, like, like Kyle said, we reopened that and made them include this project in it because it showed up.
So incredibly, at that time, the, the Strebbles project wasn't a glimmer in anybody's eye, but that certainly will be a consideration on anything being developed in the village moving forward.
Yeah, I just want to see comprehensive planning, you know, and not oh, this little thing here, this little thing here, when they're all within a mile of each other. It's, it's crazy. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anybody else, Megan?
Uh, yep, there's Anne Smalling who'd like to talk. Before, while she's entering and everything, because you guys were talking about cumulative impacts and stuff. At what point do I have to send this to the town, the fire department, all that other stuff? Are we not there yet? Are we, are we there yet? What do you think, Kyle? You're muted, so.
Uh, no. If we have a complete, if we have a complete application and they've submitted the information the boards requested specifically, one of the primary items was an updated traffic study. Then, then the board can, at this point, commence coordination and send a full and complete application to other involved agencies to get their comments prior to making a determination of significance.
Okay, so I don't think we have the completed traffic study.
So Kyle, since this got a deck twelve, thirteen years ago, whatever it was, like, how are we couching those referrals? Should we include the previous neg deck? Are we going to do a, an addendum to the secret? I'm not really sure, because this one's a little different.
I think we were going to be doing a brand new secret determination. Times have changed. Yeah, times have changed. It's, the approval's two thousand eight. That's fourteen years ago.
And nobody from fourteen years ago was on this application. Is that maybe Jeff? Not even me.
Very good question, Brad, but I think this board already determined when they got the application that they were going to review a, a full EAF, the full environmental assessment form. We already knew that we, obviously, we can take into consideration the previous neg act that was issues. And that's why one of the primary additional information and updated information because of all the projects that have taken place since this was approved in two thousand eight, was they specifically requested an updated traffic study so they can, you know, that's one of the primary potential impacts, given the further development along both Montauk Highway and Riverhead Road corridors. So, you know, uh, in effect, we are doing a, another secret determination and doing a determination of significance on this project at this time.
Yeah. I specifically wanted to bring up, because the last meeting was, I think, the first meeting we actually put it on since then, and we didn't really say that. So that's good to know, because I'm sure some people were wondering how we were going to treat it. So I appreciate it.
So will we make that, that secret discussion once we get the full traffic study?
Once, once the board determines that they have a full and complete application, would be the appropriate time to commence coordination.
Okay. Uh, we did have a member of the public who wanted to speak before we got off on our little tangent here.
Anne Smalling?
Yes, hi, I want to thank you for acknowledging me this evening, and I wanted to let you know I concur with everything that Ms. Conway brought up. Those are my concerns also, and I am a resident of the Patio Villas community since two thousand five. When we just went off on the tangent, I want to make sure that tangent discussion was regarding this WH Equity project and not the Rogers Avenue project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. Updated traffic study would be do it, done, and a full EAF for the new WH Equity project and not going back to Patio Gardens in two thousand eight.
Well, that's, that's going to be another discussion, but there'll be definitely be, you know, whether we include the old findings, I guess, with the new referral, I guess, is, is, it's another discussion, right, Kyle? I'm not sure if I understood. You're still muted.
Is that it?
Somebody's trying, somebody's trying to call me. No, again, I think this, when this first came back on, I, in late in the fall before the holidays, this board decided they wanted to treat this as a new application with a new secret review.
So we're going to do a brand new EAF, and we'll start the process up. The only question is whether we're going to include the old stuff with the new stuff.
Well, I don't think you could ignore the old stuff, because some of the impacts haven't changed, but we have to take into consideration the times, the eight, you know, the, the time between two thousand and eight, nine, and, and all the development that's happened subsequent to that. In terms of the impacts, the community character and those things, the buildings haven't changed, the site plan hasn't changed. So I, I, I think we'll get, you'd have to make the same findings, or you'd kind of be, you know, arbitrary and capricious on that. But on for the, for the impacts associated with, you know, this gets back to kind of the cumulative, you, you have to take a, and, and it's the burden of proof on, on the applicant to demonstrate how, you know, how this application and the impacts associated fit into what's happening in two thousand twenty-two, not two thousand and eight. And actually, it's probably, we did the secret determination probably in two thousand and six, by the time we got through that application.
I have one other question. I have one other question about the Rogers Avenue project. What is the acreage of that project?
We're not discussing Rogers.
Do not know.
Yeah.
It's not on the application today.
That's, that's.
I just was trying to compare the acreage of that with similar number of units and community building and pool to the acreage for the WH Equity project.
If you, I mean, you're, you're you're more than free to pull the building file, you could pull the, ask for the building file in the village hall, and you could, you could look at that yourself.
Okay, thank you. I will do that.
Yeah, anyone on, all the participants, you can always contact the, the building zoning department. I'd be happy to, to chat with you about some of these, these questions.
Okay, thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Anybody else, Megan?
Muted, sorry. No, nobody else is. Their hand raised. It looks like that's it. Um, so.
Motion, we end the meeting?
No.
Just like, I would just like to make one final comment. My, do not interpret my silence in response to the many comments that were made tonight to be agreement on all of them. And one of the reasons that I was asking for an adjournment was that these are the very issues that I need to and want to address, and I will address at the next hearing.
Okay, Mr. Hume, that's understood, that's understood.
Thank you.
We gotta, we gotta hold you over to the twenty-fourth. I'll hold them over to the twenty-fourth, then close the meeting.
Thank you. Good night.
Chop chop.
There's a motion to hold over to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Motion to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Bye bye.